Okay, so Debbie. Any agenda amendments?
I don't think so. Did you have anything to add? We had some student matters for executive session.
Right.
I don't think we had. We left old business blank. You can give an update, but they usually, I could do that under superintendent.
Okay, beautiful. And maybe, yeah, that's right. And then give, like, Meghan can help with some of that too, updating on something that's happening within the business. Okay, so.
Wait, I did student what?
What?
Just on dates and jet.
Oh, or movie star. Okay, so correspondence items for future agenda, public comments. Debbie's here.
Debbie's in public.
Did you have anything you wanted to add now? Okay, we're okay. Okay, so how about, I'd entertain a motion to approve the April 17 board meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Meghan makes the motion.
I'll second it.
John seconded it. Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question. At the last meeting, Dina mentioned something about, that there were three professional days that needed to be made up, and she was asking for one more day in August. Did she mean June? In the minutes, it said that, you said there were three professional days that needed to be made up, and you were asking for one extra day in August? Did you mean June?
Probably that we had done the extra day in August.
We had the extra day in August.
So in August, okay. I didn't know if it was this.
So they didn't have to make up that fourth day?
Oh, okay.
Because we front-loaded it.
I wasn't here, so I just realized when I heard.
Good detail checking. Yeah, that's good. Okay, so any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And so pass, three to zero. Great. Now we're on to our playground presentation with Debbie Winters. Welcome Debbie, thank you for coming again. I know we've got a couple of people that do the playground, and they can jump in, I'm sure to help.
She does all.
Well, it was a big week last week. I'm sure, I don't know if you all noticed, the signs around town, they've been filled in completely. So as of last Tuesday, well Friday is when we fill the signs in. But we received a donation last week from our friends at Peerless Clothing that put us over the top. And so we, so our goal for the campaign was always $200,000. With knowing that you had.
Some capital reserve.
Yes, yes. So that's really, we expect, I think we, you know, there's still brick purchases coming in, and a couple of other donations and grants that we received after the Peerless donation. So we're probably looking at maybe 205,000, slightly over the 200,000. Mark? Yeah, so it's really, really exciting. Jason and I are meeting with the village and the town on Thursday morning here at the school. We've met with them a couple of times about coordinating the site work portion, because the village and the town are helping with that. So we'll be meeting with them to really nail down the scope and nail down the schedule. Do you, should I talk a little about schedule?
You can, yeah, yeah.
So Jason has lined Petunelli up to start the demolition, I think around the 17th.
The day.
Or the day after. I think they just said Saturday, he's anxious.
Wow, I saw that. The day after school closes.
Yeah, so I think it's a couple of days of demolition. Then the village and the town will come in and rip up the pavement and start the site prep. And they have to, for the areas where the playground equipment is going, they have to dig down 10 or 11 inches to create like a sub base. And then I believe the new equipment is scheduled for either the week of the first or the 8th of July. Is the last I heard.
Um, I thought it was gonna be delivered sooner. I thought every, Jason wanted everything in by the end of July, but I'd have to check. He's not here, that's kind of what this meeting is for.
Yeah, and then it's a seven.
Thursday's meeting.
Sorry.
Thursday's meeting, yeah.
And then it's a seven day installation on the equipment. We'll have other things to do, some site work, grass planting. So in addition to the equipment, you know, we have the park area from the Fit and Healthy Path. And so there's some concrete work there. And some landscaping there.
Yeah, he didn't say mid-July, he wanted everything done.
Yeah, I think the goal was grass hydro seeded by August 1st. To be, he needed three weeks, I think, for the grass before the kids come back. So we're on, we're on target for that. And that's really it. So it's exciting. It's, yeah, thanks, and thanks to Laura for keeping track of everything.
You're the one going out there, my mom, honestly.
You've really infused it with excitement and energy. It was great what you did.
You know, for what it's worth, thanks, thanks a lot for, it was December of 2017, I think the school board took a chance and said, oh, well, let's give it a try. And so, you know, thanks for doing that, and thanks to Dina and Justina for letting me be a part of it. I think what you're doing here, what you've done here, I honestly believe will have, you know, will have a long-term impact for our community. I wouldn't have, I've always believed that. I wouldn't have done it if I didn't feel that way. So I think it's really important, so thank you guys, really.
You've done a really nice job of getting that message out, that it's not just about a playground. It's about community, and it's about.
A lot of coordination.
Investment, yeah.
And I don't, Debbie won't say this about herself, but I know from her emails that she spends an incredible amount of time coordinating with people and finding, finding grants alone is hard and time-consuming, finding them, filling them out, meeting with people, doing site tours, going to their businesses. I mean, there's just been a huge amount of coordination on her behalf. And, and the work's not done, like she's sought out kind of designs for the entryway, which we've been working on. We're working on designs for like our leadership donor boards in the different categories. And then we still have planning to do for however we decide to do any sort of ribbon cutting or grand opening or community event to celebrate the playground. So it's, it's not done yet, but the fundraising was like just.
Money's rolling.
Yeah, that was the fun part.
It'll be exciting seeing it start when it all starts coming together.
And the nice thing was, so I pulled, I, we took the picture, I took the picture of my kids on Friday. We filled the board in, I took the picture and I posted it on Facebook and I did like a public post, you know, which I never do, but I publicly posted it. And the feedback we've been getting, like people, from people I don't necessarily know, but people are excited, a lot of great comments. It's just, it's just nice. People are really excited about it.
Was it posted on your Facebook page?
Oh, I just, yeah, and then I shared it to Swanton, Vermont, then I missed. But yeah, I mean, people are, it's just, yeah, it's nice, it's nice.
Debbie, I have a question. Are there gonna be any signs, kind of explaining the hours it can be used? The reason, the reason I ask that is I was talking with someone that brought their granddaughter, grandchild here, and were told they couldn't use it. It was during school. And I, they didn't understand why they couldn't be here. And I just tried to explain, I said, it's recess time, there are hundreds of kids out, it's a safety issue. So I think some people think they can come anytime, or is a way to put hours.
Other signs are now.
No one really reads the signs.
Not sure.
Because they're not, students aren't supposed to be here unattended for safety reasons too. So we have to work with Swanton PD a little bit better. I thank you for, during the school day, I mean, that's an issue. We usually, you know, our kids and our adults out there, I don't wanna say they're trained, but they're informed that, you know, if there's other people here during the day, please let us know, because for safety reasons, for sure.
You don't want a two or three-year-old, or four-year-old, I think without hundred kids throwing bottles around.
Totally for their safety too. So I'm assuming we'll do some posting of things and, you know, let people know what the hours are. And Swanton PD sometimes is good about coming through and checking it out. So I hope that they'll continue, maybe even increase that a little bit too.
But it is a good question about community during the school day, if they're allowed to use it or not.
No.
No.
It's not a question, they're not allowed.
And it says during school hours and school day that the playground is closed.
No, not at.
Yeah, there's always, we talked about, you know, there's a lot of after-school hours, weekend hours, summer. And so, you know.
School vacation.
And school vacations, and so, yeah.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
That's amazing, you don't want to applaud, but that was awesome, thank you. Okay, principals report. Thank you Debbie.
We have numbers in there for people to see. As of 5:22, we had seven registrations, and we got three more today, and two more since that. So we're up to 12 new students already before the year ends. So they, they keep coming. Just a little bit about what our students are doing, field trip time of year. A big shout out though to Amelia Partlow and Ricardo and Mendoza Perez. They are the two students who are representing Swanton School for the middle level scholars. So they were nominated by their classroom teachers and all the other UAs. One thing that's a challenge this year is that banquet, they do a really nice banquet and dinner at Norwich every year, and it's always on the first Wednesday of June. So we knew that it was forever on that day. So we planned our sixth grade celebration on Thursday, and they changed the dinner from there to Thursday. So the students had to make a choice, because the sixth grade celebration is a really big deal. Even though it goes till five, dinner down there is six, you can't do both. So Ricardo's family is going to come to the celebration for about a half an hour, and then go down to dinner. That's what they chose. Amelia's family, we are taking out to dinner with her classroom teacher on another night. So, you know, and we always recognize it at our recognition night as well. But it was just really hard. I hate having kids have to make those choices. But by then, when we found that out, so much of the planning had happened for the other things. So we just made the best of it, and families were just excited with that honor. So sixth grade recognition night is Tuesday, June 11th, and that is a 6:30 start time. School Board is always invited to attend. Toby would like it if it stays the school many, many years. It's very, very hot in there. And then we just listed our field trips that are happening. And this, of course, is a huge thank you to PTO for supporting our field trips. Let's see, we have end of the year summer safety assemblies. That's when Swanee comes out and teaches the kids about summer safety. Our big summer send-off celebration and field day will be held on Wednesday, June 12th. That's always a big, big day for our kids. Justina and our PBIS committee put that together, and it's a really fun day for our kids. Sarah McGuire has taken the lead in our student yearbook again this year. We are training two new people. Sarah's done it for several years, just the coordinations. Chrissy has been great in the office of helping to coordinate that, but it's a huge job. So we appreciate Sarah doing that, but her little one is heading up to MVU. Teachers, these are, these are kind of all goodbye things, which is hard in the teachers. Barb Bufard is a para professional who is retiring after 29 years of supporting Swanton School students. And Stacy Menier is another para who is leaving us. Some professional staff that are leaving, Carrie Lapin, our speech language pathologist. Tracy Oliver, a special educator. Christina Ladue, a special educator. Jamie McCarthy, grade K teacher. Olivia Fleming, grade two, and Alyssa DeWitch, a grade three teacher. So we're seeing lots of goodbyes this year. And these people have been incredible members of our Swanton School. So we will truly miss them and wish them very good luck in their next endeavor. We have hired some people, and that's all in here. Hannah Scott's gonna, actually, I'm gonna wait on these as we continue to fill them. How's that? So, once again, PTO came, PTO's so good to us. They did a beautiful job helping to support and celebrate all staff during Staff Appreciation Week. From little goodies in our mailboxes to a beautiful breakfast, and it was very, very much appreciated.
I didn't even know, Staff Appreciation.
Oh.
When was it?
Um, week of May 7th, 4th.
It's like right after April break.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I would've sent an email or something.
Well, and our Administrative Assistance Day, that always comes during April vacation. So we told our ladies, we can either start working during break, because we're always two weeks late doing that. And School Nurses Day is in there, so many, it's a very celebratory time without an S-BAC, so. Have to have some like. Jason's updates are, we have successfully awarded the Babcock Parking Lot Project to Brown Electric, and that will be installed this summer. There's so much going on. We're working with the town and village, as Debbie just said, to finalize the plans for installation. And transition from spring, a lot of spring cleaning. Shamoise does our cleanup, and they were here today, which was great, because Jason asked them to come earlier this year, so they were out there working today. And all of the custodial maintenance requests are up to date. We have, I wanted to give a big thank you to Susan Tanner. Sue helped out. June Deschaux was out for a while, our custodian who works that middle shift at Babcock. And Sue was helping out every day after school to help pick up some of that slack. We don't really have a substitute custodian, so when someone is out, especially for a long period of time, it gets really, really tough with that. So Sue came and she worked, and June is back, and we truly missed her, but she's feeling really good too, so. And when June came back, we started composting in the classrooms, so we're kind of up and running with that as well. And then just end of the year things happening here.
That's good, thank you. Okay, so thank you, Dina, that was great. I read it beforehand, you got it out really quick. We had it a lot of times.
Yeah.
You have a look at it, thank you for that. With everything going on, it's not easy. So our next is our superintendent report.
So it's a short one this month, a lot going on in May with the budget preparation, with contracts going out for professional staff in, for May 1st, and then getting them in, the hiring season, preparing support staff contracts, working with the new, with the association on who will be in and who will be covered by the new master agreement as a single entity. All of that work happening between HR and the business office, and doing a lot of prep and planning for the Mississauga district. There's just a lot of business that needs to be completed for this transition, for everyone to have retirement and insurance and pay, all the big things.
Details.
All the big things. And we'll work on the smaller things as we get there. And also Sheldon, they just had their budget vote for the Northern Mountain Valley Unified Union School District on May 21st. And that was a successful vote. Only about 400 and something people voted, but it was a substantial win in favor of passing that budget, which I thought was very positive. And of course, hope that the voters of our school districts are supportive of our schools in our vote. And I just had a little information about, over April break, Kosha, Tanya, Robert, Linda Rouse Turner, the special ed administrator for MVU, and I, there were five of us, went to the RTI at Work Conference. It's an international conference, it goes on all around the world at different times. And we chose the April vacation time, because we wouldn't be voting on a budget over April vacation. And there wouldn't be any big, it just seemed like a better time, because it's been a very busy year. So it just happened to be in Edmonton, Alberta, which nobody could accuse of picking Edmonton, Alberta as, you know, a fun getaway.
We know you weren't on vacation.
There was a whole lot of nothing on that. But it was an excellent conference. All of the administrators and many coaches have attended this conference over the past several years. And one of the things that really attracted me to these schools is the work in MTSS and response intervention, and how far that work is advanced here compared to other school districts in Vermont. And a lot of it has to do with the high-quality professional learning that's happened there. So we were the team of newer administrators that hadn't been to that. So we attended, and we're continuing to work with all of our schools on ensuring we have multi-tier systems of support, so all learners can succeed. So that was the, just because things are changing so often, that was what I put in the newsletter. In terms of other updates, let's see.
Did everybody have the same trouble you had getting back from Canada or?
Oh, yeah. We were, our flight was canceled, and then we, it was a direct flight. And so I planned it so there wouldn't be any events, but then we had that informational meeting that was on Saturday.
Wow, yeah. That was okay, yeah. But still, I mean, you didn't get any time to relax and vacation.
We were in airports an awful lot, but still, it's the miracle of flight. You gotta be optimistic that you can fly all the way across the country, the continent.
New country.
And that, you know, it's, think of how long it took our ancestors to get to the Black House.
That's a really optimistic.
I just went to St. Anna Motel X in Toronto Extra, than I didn't want to. I think we can handle, you know.
All right.
I'm an optimist.
Good attitude.
It's hard to do that at 2:00 in the morning, but that was, it was all for the best. We all arrived safe and sound.
I'm gonna try to channel you next time.
That's right.
Very good.
You always meet interesting people.
So our next is, next time.
Well, yes, so within that report, there are a few things that we wanna talk about. Legislatively, the legislature hasn't ended. I did see your mom in the little picture. But there is no sign of any kind of delay or anything like that. They're just wrapping up for the final business. The litigations are still ongoing. I believe Judge Mello is going to hear the case tomorrow. The rest of the case. And a decision, a written decision would be issued in about three weeks. The first part of the case around constitutionality will, has been filed with the Vermont Supreme Court already. They are still holding out for a stay from the Vermont Supreme Court. And so we would let you know if something comes back.
They have until June 30th, right?
Yes. So we of course have our budget warned for June 11th vote. There has been some confusion about an article that has a typo. It's the very last article, and since we found out about it today, and we're on camera, I figured we can clarify a little of that. We are working with the Secretary of State's office on that typo. The article is not substantive, it's about other business, should there be other business? And so I don't know whether that typo will make a difference or not. If it does, then we will ensure that we follow all necessary steps to make sure that the vote is properly warned and the ballots are addressed. So, you know, that's fine.
So June 11th is also the date of the sixth grade celebration.
Absolutely it is.
So that'll have people out to vote maybe.
Absolutely, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
They can do that before they come.
Yeah.
And we have a little pin stop. Meghan very nicely joins Chris Shepherd and Laura and me. And we had a Channel 15 presentation on the budget that we taped. So it will be, it's on YouTube, it will be on Facebook. It is on Facebook.
It's on Facebook.
It's on the Northwest Superiors Union.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, yep.
And it's easy to find.
Yeah, it's right at the top.
And so anyone who sees it, if we just reshare every once in a while in terms of Facebook, I will do that with our Facebook page. I put it on today. That way it will keep it in the forefront.
You all did a great job. I don't know if anybody else in here has had a chance to see it, but it's a really good job, really well organized, all the things people are gonna be looking for. I thought it was really good.
And the budget is also on the Franklin Northwest website. We will have a new website that will be mvstdschools.org.
When is that gonna start?
July 1st. Pretty sure, I just came from a website meeting from, at 5:00 o'clock.
Excellent, okay.
I think I can head onto that. So also related to the transition is information about a quick claim deed. So although the, led, the courts are still sort of weighing the whole transfer of property, and the, actually Judge Mello did determine that the state owns all the school property and can do with it as it likes. There are still folks out there that are not sure about that. But what we do have is a quick claim deed to document the transfer of property. Does not need to be signed, because if I sold you my house, I would have to sign that. Because the state is transferring the property. It is required, but it is best practice.
Okay, gotcha.
So that in 50 years, when someone wants to look at the trail of property transference, that it's on file and with all the town folks. So what I would like to do either, well, for you today, would be to authorize the board chair to sign a quick claim deed. It does not have to be done even before June 30. It could be done when the lawsuits are all finished. And I have copies for, I mean, it's a very straightforward, the Swanton one in particular is very straightforward.
I didn't know you could have a legal document that was straightforward. I mean, seriously.
Well, it still has lots of whereas's, you know, just to make sure we know.
Just make sure everything's clear.
That we know. And it would need to be signed before a notary. So it's not anything you'd be signing this evening. And it just describes the parcel of land and the properties on the land.
And what they're saying is the state owned it when Swanton owned it, Swanton School District owned it. And so now the state's, they're saying, yes, but it's in this name.
It is not required of us to sign, to sign these. I tried to remember if we did it in my previous district. Maybe we did, and I just wasn't, it was my job to be involved with it. But I think it would be best for our schools to, each school will do that. Couple of the other towns have transferred some property to the towns. So they're, they have two, and so they're a little more involved.
What kind of property would they?
So Heighy voted, there's this little parcel that the town thought was theirs. And they're doing some development. And it's just like a little corner of something that was gifted to the school district. They thought it was gifted to the town. So when they did surveys and due diligence, that was uncovered. And they spent, I don't know, six months discussing whether to do it or not. And they did decide to transfer that to the town. So that's one deed for that little piece of land. And then the rest of the Heighy properties will be transferred to the Mississippi Valley School District when they authorize the board chair to do that. So each, and Franklin is transferring their athletic field and walking path and community garden, because the town uses it, the school doesn't. So they transferred that property, they voted to do that. So if you feel comfortable, it would be wonderful to have a motion to authorize Carrie to sign that before, because you can.
Before we do that, are, is there any property we should be giving to the town?
Well, we can't just do that. You have to have an election to do that.
Well, it just seems like everybody else is doing it. I mean, it would make sense.
Probably not willy-nilly though.
Only because.
Well, one is a quarter acre.
We weren't thinking that way. Okay, so one's a quarter acre, how much is the other?
17 acres.
Of what?
17 acres.
Is someone trying to get in?
Maybe Thomas here.
I mean, is there any area that, like you mentioned with Franklin, what they had voted to give to the town, the school wasn't using. Is there anything like that within our properties that we're not using for school?
If you were to do that, you would need to, the new board would have to take it up.
Okay.
And then it would have to be an article presented to the voters.
So something to think about? Okay, thank you.
So the last piece that I have under my report is that we have arranged a celebration for school board members. It's gonna be on June 19th at the Abbey.
That's nice.
And I believe it's going to be at 6:30. We haven't sent out invitations yet, but mark your calendars. We'll have hors d'oeuvres and things like that.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna be on my way to Alaska.
Oh, no, that's awful.
Alaska. I'm sorry that I'll miss it, but I got a nephew getting married up in Alaska.
Well, that's important.
That's fun.
Yeah, so it'll be fun.
Oh, Don's here. Hi, Don.
Oh, there's Poshinga. Oh, okay.
Awesome. So the celebration will be at six thirty at the Abbey for, and we want to recognize board members that will be leaving and their service.
That's really nice.
And I thought it was important to do, I know each board tends to do something like that on their own. But in this case, because of all the local school boards ending, it made sense to do something, to have a celebration.
It's a great idea.
That was great. Thank you.
Did you say the thirtieth?
June nineteenth.
Sometime this summer I might have a barbecue or something for just all us guys to celebrate. Yeah, that would be nice when I get back from Alaska.
How long are you gonna be in Alaska?
Just till July first.
Nice.
June nineteenth, July first.
Wow.
Julie, we may wanna mention that Don Collins just arrived for the minute.
Yes, thank you.
Good thinking.
I'm happy to take the minutes.
Thank you, Julie. That's awesome. Okay, Don, we're glad you're here. What about old business?
Glad I'm here too.
We didn't have any old business. Um, I sort of gave some Act forty-six updates, which we typically would put under there.
Right, but it's all new now because it's actually.
It's all new?
Yeah, starting June, July, right? Okay. How about new business?
Before, see, before we do that, just an update on enrollments. Think I saw something in your report about enrollments next year, but good. Enrollments look good.
Yep, so far. Yeah, we just said we were at seven at the time we published that. We had, I think, five more, so.
We had about six twelve.
We were already up twenty, so now we're.
So we'll see, continuing to grow.
Yeah.
That's good.
That is good. Nick?
Yes, it is very good.
We're gonna be too big, too big for the school. This is a concern.
And it's the hard thing that we talk about a lot with those numbers. While that is really good right now, we do know that some of our incoming students are coming with some higher level of need and support. So that impacts decisions that we have to make around personnel. So that's all what you, you kinda think that you're ready to move forward. And right now, we may need to look at some other supports to be put in place.
Well, and as, as we're growing too, I hope that the new board, the MVSD board, looks at teacher ratios too, teacher and staff ratios. Because as we're growing, those are getting, you know.
Yep.
So, um.
We were gonna talk about the playground donation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, let's talk about the playground donation from the board. That was a great idea.
Sorry, I broke my phone, so I'm trying to make it stop.
Don't you love it?
I don't know how I did this.
You gonna iPhone?
Yeah.
Just swipe up from the bottom.
What are you trying to get?
On the top. Her flashlight is on, it's gonna drain her battery anyway.
I had that happen the other day. It wouldn't go off. Sometimes you gotta turn it off and.
Sorry.
Yeah, mine did that the other day too, Jam.
Oh, good times.
I blinded someone with mine.
I know. Oh, my flashlight's on. So who's gonna start this conversation?
I will.
Okay.
So we've discussed sort of the possibility of doing some sort of donation from the school board for the playground. And initially, we had talked about doing a larger brick that we could include all of our names on. That is not an option. We only have the one size available. But we do have benches that are available to, they'll be part of that entrance off of the Fit and Healthy Path. And we are able to have, um, either a two by eight plaque on the bench or a three by ten and a half inch, um, which would allow us, believe it is, four lines of text at twenty-eight characters per line. So that could give us more space to sort of spell out that, if, you know, the last one, the school board. Is certainly a larger donation than we had originally talked about. Believe it's a thousand dollars for the bench. But I really wanna do something. And it would not only be fantastic for the playground, but I think it would be really, really nice to have some sort of recognition of the last board.
I think it'd be really nice.
That's a great idea.
It's nice.
So we have to talk about, maybe we could talk about it in executive session too in terms of, well, I guess you can't, can you? I was just thinking, you know, in terms of how much people wanna chip in and stuff.
Well, it would be, I think it would be from the board's budget.
That's the one I was assuming you were talking about.
Yeah, that's what, yes.
But that makes it even easier. Oh, heck, yes.
It's why it needs to be an open session.
Okay, I thought it was gonna be me saying my husband would, you know, be upset if we put more. Okay, let's, let's, um, any more discussion about that or can I, would you like to make a motion? Or do you think someone else should make the motion?
Well, I'm not sure what the process would be if there needs to be.
And what do we say on it? What are we gonna do?
Oh, that, that would be deter, to be determined. You just make a board motion?
I have a question of Julie. Julie, are we planning to have one more board meeting?
It is not scheduled.
Not scheduled, okay. Well, let me say before I ask, I personally am not interested in using our school budget money at this time. I'm getting a lot of pushback already. People tell me, can you give me about the budget? Of course, talk is talk, and sometimes there's not a lot to talk about, so, school. So I, I personally, I don't think we should use school district money at all, number one. But number two, if we were right near the end of the year and we knew how we stood, and Laura's probably already given that report tonight.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. You know, if we had some newfound money that didn't have, that wasn't earmarked, I certainly would entertain a discussion. Laura heard me say this, you people serve on two boards, so you really get to the fullest. I'm very concerned about the budget going forward. I, I'm not a pessimist about this year's board, the budget. I hope everybody listening to TV knows that we worked diligently, brought it together. And I think it's a good, solid budget that deserves everybody's support. But as Laura has explained to us a few times, carryover is a, can be a big factor going forward. And maybe it's because I have a three-year term, but I doubt that's it. But I, I don't wanna see us out there a couple of years from now, really having to fight hard to keep what we have because we didn't have carryover. That kinda goes, I know, I know a thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but sometimes perception's stronger than reality. So I like the idea of a bench. I don't have a problem with a bench. But as I say, to take it out of the line item, unless we have our own line item, it has been used for miscellaneous over the years, and that I don't know.
I thought we do.
Yeah, we do, and we haven't used it, have we? I think we used it to print something once.
A few small lines that you have. It's not necessarily for that type of thing, but it could be a supply, I guess, or a piece of equipment.
I thought there was a school board, like, because we used it for marketing.
There's a board of education. There's a group of lines, but most of it is salaries and, um, legal fees, yeah. There's, there, there's a small line, two hundred and fifty dollars for supplies that hasn't been spent. Overall, you're saving about eight thousand dollars in that cumulatively in that group of lines. So, um, there is savings there.
Well, do you wanna put this discussion off until we find out how we're doing on our budget?
No, um, aren't you glad I came? I was so quiet in here.
Oh, we're glad you came.
But Julie, you know, you know the issue I brought up at MVU? Is that appropriate to be up here?
Absolutely.
Okay. Talking with Julie, yeah, Laura, I guess I started with Laura, about, about the stipends for board members? Remember that?
Yep.
I believe history says that board members get a stipend usually October, November, December for their work they did from March to March.
November, December.
Yeah.
I've gotten one stipend my whole time. Being on the board.
I figure one every year.
I got one once, yeah.
Well, is this your second year on the board?
Yeah.
That's why you're on the board.
No, I've gotten two.
Yeah.
Oh, I got one.
But you were here longer than.
That's right, but you, yes.
We were elected this year.
I'm not. I'm sorry. I was just thinking that it didn't always happen.
So, so anyway, oh, I got one last year. Anyway, what I was thinking was, and, and to be honest with you, I thought about it at the MVU board, but it certainly applies here too. We have board members who are gonna serve four months. Been pretty taxing four months for many people, whether they went to the transition committee or they went to the new board. So I had suggested or asked Julie and Laura to consider that, that's about a third of a year. At least when I taught math, it was a third of a year. That, in, before they closed the books on June thirty, every board member who's been serving, which are the four of us and Toby, would receive a stipend of one-third of what we would have had, had they not eliminated, eliminated our board.
So.
And, and I know, I mean, I'm fairly new back here, but John's been here a while. Toby's been here quite a while. In the MVU, we had some people been here a long while. I just thought, number one, it was a, it was a courtesy, but a courtesy that had been earned. So I tossed out and asked them if we could talk about it at some board meeting we did the other night. I think it went over all right the other night. Nobody said, don't do it. So that would be an option here, if we each got a third of our stipend. Then we could give back part of that money to buy the bench.
That's a good idea.
That's my thought.
Sounds good.
I have to look into that. That seems odd.
It's true.
Stranger things could happen. I'll ask tomorrow.
I was thinking, I said once that you know, yeah, anyway.
So what would that amount to? Math.
Eighteen, eighteen thirty-three.
Okay. So, I mean, that would be more than.
That would be plenty.
So not, I mean, not even, I, I would, I would happily just forfeit it, say, just put it toward the donation. But I don't think everybody has to do that, especially since it's, you know, almost double what we're looking at.
I, I don't disagree with, but for taxes and legal stuff, I think we should get our money and then we should donate it back if we wanna do it that way. I mean, that's it.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's a decision that you're making, we should have a clear path on how we get to it.
It should be a paper trail that they got this much money for the work they did and they opted to pay it back pennies or quarters.
Please not pennies and quarters.
Please not pennies and quarters.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, so one, make a motion to that effect, or?
Well, you'd have to make a motion to award a third of the board salaries as well.
Right.
Then you wouldn't need a motion because it's a personal donation.
Right.
Is this coming out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year.
This year's budget.
This year's budget.
There is no budget next year.
Okay, so we have it, okay.
It would come out of this projected carryover.
So I'd like to entertain a motion if someone would like to make it for the one-third stipend.
I'll make that motion.
Don made the motion. Any seconds?
I just have a question. I don't know if we need a second before we can do further discussion though. So I'll, I'll second, um, for the further discussion. So if this is coming out of the eight thousand, what's the difference? It's, it just, it's my decision? Like the, it's coming out of the same pot. So for me, I don't, I don't know what the difference would be for using these funds for a donation in our name or it going to my pocket. Like, I feel like it's more appropriate to put it toward the, the playground than to cut myself a check. That's, I'm not sure what the difference is. Seems like semantics.
I guess as a former school administrator, also it was important to have a paper trail. And I guess you could, the, the way you're talking, but if we all get paid, uh, then it's an individual decision. And we show it, or we want it or not show it. I don't know. I think I can find if somebody asked at a public meeting, it'd be a lot easier to say.
You do?
It, it's two different things completely, because you'd be making a conscious decision to pay yourself one-third of a stipend for the months that you've worked out of a year that you otherwise would not be compensated for. That's one decision that has to be made, whether, and then it's up to you what you do with it. The other decision is if you wanna donate money as a board or not donate money as a board.
Right.
That's, I think we, that's why I think it's getting complicated.
It ends in the same way, and I understand what you're saying, but.
Okay. So it's almost as if your, your first motion is really about whether you should pay the board members a third of their stipend, which I would support anyway, because it has been double, triple duty for many folks. And then have the discussion about whether you want to choose to donate individually and, or choose to have a donation from the board, from savings in the school district budget as, as a, for the bench. So those would be two separate things.
Well, if we get paid and then make the donation, then it's in the minutes, or if we make a motion, it shows that we've made that.
Commitment.
Commitment, maybe.
Yes.
It's a personal commitment, so.
Yeah, like this, it just 'cause I, I am going to, doesn't mean I'm going to. Like, I don't have to.
This is, you know, I think, I know, it's probably like, oh, come on, you guys, just get along with it, right? But it is kinda interesting in terms of, I think we've probably all made personal commitments. So the, you know, personal contributions at this point. So for me, it's really about the bench with the last school board. So whatever's the best way to do that in terms of transparency, in terms of accounting, you know, I'm fine with that.
Again, it's not really about transparency. I can, we can work through both ways. It's whether or not the board wants to be compensated for their three months and feels like that's the right thing to do. They're separate issues to me.
Okay.
So the transparency and the accountability piece, we can work with either way. You have the right to use money from this fund to repurpose to the playground if that's what you so choose to do, or not.
So we're really trying to.
Address two.
Two issues.
It'd be two separate motions, two separate votes, right?
Yeah, right. But if we vote to pay the, out of our existing fund, as opposed to carrying it over to the new MVSD district, then we use what we have in the, in our funds that we've accumulated, you know, and budgeted for, which I think makes sense personally. But then, if you, you know, you don't have to vote to pay us, or you can. But I think we should use the money that's in there for the bench, just, it doesn't mean we can't.
So the cleanest way to do that is to have two separate votes on exactly what you just said. And that actually is the best way to do it. You might be spending more money, but it's the right way to probably go about doing it.
So, um, which, the motion is out there, right?
Yes.
It's already been made. We've had our discussion.
For the third stipend.
So we've got the, the thing to pay the stipend for one-third. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No?
Neat.
Okay. You can say neat.
Three more.
Yeah, you can say no. I don't know what Toby would say.
Still passes.
I could put it off, but that's why I asked another meeting, because it could be a full board first.
It's still pass, so.
Okay, so.
Okay, first to the one.
Three to one, yep.
Okay, so let's do that. Okay, so, um, next vote, if we could entertain a motion about.
Sorry to interrupt you, but when would you like those issued? Long as it's before June thirty, or is there a certain time you want that issued? That's usually the board's discretion.
I don't care. Do you care?
I vote it out, so.
As long as it's before June thirty.
Make it the last check.
Then, um.
I'd rather not wait till the last check. It's gonna be a very busy day.
Hey, our next motion is, if we could have, if I'd like to entertain a motion about this second thing we talked about, if we wanna use our school board funds to.
I will make a motion to use a thousand dollars of the projected eight thousand dollar overage, or?
In the board, board lines?
Yeah, in the board lines, yeah. Use a thousand dollars to donate a bench in the school board's name to the new Swanton Community Playground.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
So three to one again. So three to one again. Okay. Let's move on. Thank you. Let's go to fiscal and HR report. Laura, if you're ready.
Making it.
We can wait. Oh, we didn't do this. We didn't make a motion, did we? Or did we?
No.
No, we did not.
But can we do that? Is that okay before we move on? The motion about this, um.
Quick claim.
Quick.
So that's to allow the chair.
Board chair to sign it.
Right, assign it.
As long as it's before December thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
Of this year.
Well, it has to be before June, or I won't be.
No, because the board, if you authorize the signature before.
Okay.
It could be before June thirtieth, it could be after June thirtieth, as long as the authorization is now.
Okay, so the quick claim deed. Try and say that three times. Okay, so can I entertain a motion for the, for the board chair to be able to sign the quick, quick claim deed?
I'll make that motion.
And the date, we're putting in December?
Sometime before? December thirty-first. Okay, you'll add that? Sometime before December thirty-first, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Don seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That's four zero. In favor. And that gives us time before December to look into anything else we might wanna look into.
That would need, that would be the new board.
Right, but we could ask them.
Right, no, right, I just wanted to make sure.
We'd have to look into it first.
I hit that straight, yes.
That would be a new deed and a new board would be signed, a new deed.
Question for Laura. Laura, so our books will be audited here, probably six, within six months after we close our accounts in June twenty.
Within a couple of months, actually.
Yeah, right. And then will the report come to the new board? Or would, I mean, I don't expect there're gonna be any issues at all, but I'm just wondering.
I think it's supposed to go to the, to the old board and the new board, probably. Or at least, it should be coming to you guys for sure, cause that's in the Act forty-six language.
Because anything, anything related to that, we, it's our, in our court until.
Yes.
End of December, right?
That's correct.
Okay, beautiful. So Laura, thank you, now we're back to you.
Okay.
So John has the warrants for the month of April.
I do. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants for the month of April twenty nineteen in the amount of five hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No, so carried, or something.
Okay, and I also passed out a financial report that is, has been updated, really through today. Typically, we do the end of the month, but I wanted this to be as updated, updated as it possibly could be. As far as revenues are concerned, special ed intensive revenue has now maybe all been received. This year has been quite quirky with the state, so we did, yeah, so we did receive a memo just a couple of days ago saying that they might do another reconciliation. So we'll see. But I think, I think this, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that's been received is about a hundred thousand dollars less than we, than we anticipated. Should be what we will end up with in Swanton, and it's less because your special ed local expenses went down and it's a, it's a reimbursement model right now. The only other thing I wanted to mention, this is partially for Dina, that thirteen hundred dollars from the Visbit Safety Grant has been received. So that will offset, I think it's the door magnet.
Yep.
The cost of the door magnets, which was great. Thank you to Bonnie Molten in our office for working through that process. Each school got a little bit, and so did our office, so that was nice. Overall, projected carryover is similar to what you saw a month and a half ago, about a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so in pretty good shape. Basically, what, what I've done is go, go through and if something is not encumbered, there's not an outstanding PO or a contract or, or benefit cost, the lines have been reduced to accommodate that. So any spending, you know, that's not a utility bill or something, I've accommodated for all of that. But anything else would need to come out of this carryover, so. It gives you a really good, a snapshot in time where this is truly what your projected carryover is. That being said, the backcock parking and those pieces that you've already accounted for or encumbered for a certain purpose, that is included.
It is included.
Yes, yeah.
Let me ask a question, as from thinking of something Don said in terms of budget and stuff, and also something you said about carryover being important. I'm just, cause I'm, I'm still thinking, you know, between now and when we start the MVSD. How much carryover do the other schools, do they bring in with it? It's kinda the same thing happening with them?
Pretty typical carryovers, except for MVU, who is going through a huge bond project right now, and so they may be utilizing some of that for the overages that they've incurred with their bond project. But again, that's pretty typical. It's not, with a bond project. And that will leave a mark. Don's right. I mean, MVU, who's traditionally had hundreds of thousands of dollars carried over because it's a fifteen million dollar budget, that will leave a hole the year after next, when we are looking at revenues in our net and spending calculation. Other than that, I think the schools are pretty close to where they typically are. And that will leave a hole.
Are we all pretty typically, like, I know we must be more, since we have a higher budget than everybody else.
Oh, right, but I'm saying like percentage-wise, you know, yeah, yeah. I know a hundred and seventy thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, definitely is to me, but on a nine million dollar budget, it's culture than I would like to be, realistically. Like, it's, it's comfortable, but it's.
It's one point seven percent of that, isn't it, or something?
If you have a couple of kids move in or a couple of high-cost things happen in a year, that carryover could be gone in a blink, and that's what I always have caution people about, but.
Thank you for getting this all done for us today.
Laura, on page five, group of transportation, it seemed, it pretty seemed that the savings projected.
That's the netting of the revenues, instead of being on the revenue side, they are, yeah. So it's really not, not a savings, it's just a different place we're representing it.
Is that pretty typical, that we would be on the positive side with special ed transportation?
Oh, special ed transportation, I'm sorry.
Page five.
Well, it's always one of those things, um.
No, it's a crapshoot, and it's unpredictable.
Yeah, yeah, so it depends on what we budget for, um, so.
Cause as I looked at that, and looked at a carryover, say, we were, very tight. And most of this is one-on-one transportation?
For, for the special ed line, that's just the special ed line. The other contracted service is your, is your general student contract. Yeah, which is where that hundred and twenty-five, or I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand worth of savings is just the netting of your revenue out of that line, rather than on the revenue side.
All right, thank you.
This is one thing that's gonna be really nice by having the MVSD, to not have to do this so many times for different.
Oh, yeah. We've been talking about that a lot, all the ins and outs that have to happen, the sub-granting and the asking for reimbursement and the monies, you know, the federal grant money going in and out, and that won't have to, have to happen anymore.
It'll streamline a lot.
Yeah, yeah, a lot less transactions, a lot of business, twenty-seven million dollars worth of business, but.
Right, 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 right.
So will this carryover, do it generally to the new district?
The carryover will.
Or stay with us, with our part of the budget?
There's no your part of the budget, per se.
There's just one budget.
So, well, I have a question, on the special ed intensive elementary, it's down. Is that because we have fewer students that are intensive needs? Is that what?
Well, we budget based on a service plan that's down eighteen months ahead of time, so it's, it's always our best guess at that point in time, and so much changes in that amount of time. So compared to when we did the service plan and when we were budgeting, the costs have been down. But it also has to do with when we receive the revenue, which is, I was, I've been alluding to all year, that the state is on no kind of normal cycle that we're used to in applying special ed revenue. It used to be that you knew exactly when you were gonna get it and when they were gonna have to reconcile on how it was gonna be allocated. Things have changed in our current system.
So intensive reimbursement is the fifty-six percent reimbursement that typically comes back after the local share of special ed is paid and the grant, the block grant portion is paid. It would just be any revenue that's expected above and beyond that. Has, so you are in October of one year budgeting for the very next fiscal year. And that's where it really is an estimate. You count the children that you know that are in front of you, and some will come and some will go, and IP's will change, and services will shift. So that's where sometimes you end up spending less money in special ed than anticipated, and in other years you spend more.
So with new students we're getting, and instead we're getting some that maybe, should we be budgeting more for that, since we have the money? In our budget?
You, it doesn't really work that way.
Doesn't work that way.
The carryover that you have from year to year would help with that, but our carryover has always been allocated a year ahead, or we always skip a year, so it allows for reconciliation. So in this case, the state will front us, so to speak, they'll, they'll front us special ed revenue next year to get us going. And then it's up to us to file our reports on time, to say, here's what we're actually spending. Maybe we need more, maybe we need less than what we originally had anticipated. The problem is the reconciliations aren't happening the way that we've been used to. Maybe it's staffing at the AOE changing, I'm not sure exactly what it is, we're trying to figure it out, but. Like, right now, that, we did not need to ask Swanton for any more, to pay any more special ed assessments at this time, because of the way the revenues have come in and the expenses have fallen. But really, the reconciliations are sort of rolling now in special ed. They don't all hit in one fiscal year, if that makes sense. So we're sort of doing the best we can in trying to get rid of peaks and valleys and just sort of ride things out, but. Well, it's not perfect, and I hope it gets better, but that's where we are right now in all honesty. It's not a good model.
And any changes, any changes in, in needs for special ed are managed within the budget that we'll have.
Right.
And in the future, we'll have a block grant, we will get reimbursed, so it will be, all of our decisions will be based on the money that we have at the moment.
Right, and then you would need to adjust your budget and try to plan ahead, is the best, I mean, that's what we're doing now, but it'd be more imperative even then.
So let me ask a question then, in terms of, cause what you're talking about in terms of the carryover. Okay, so we norm, so we're only get, I know you have so many numbers in your head, for me to even think that you might have this number in your head is probably pretty presumptuous. But how much carryover do we typically have at the end of a year, counting everybody involved, MVU?
Everybody involved? A million?
So we typically would have a million?
Well, it's MVU, because it's a fifteen million dollar budget, they might have a five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar carryover, some years, some years they might not.
But, and so we normally would have that much, whereas this year, we're only gonna have, what, counting ours, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand done from MVU?
Oh, well, maybe, I'm still hoping a small amount, maybe a hundred thousand, maybe less from MVU, um. Three, three fifty? Probably closer to three. Yeah, it's, it's going to leave a mark, but a lot of other things can change between now and then too. The yield's gonna change, equities, pupils are gonna change. I mean, if Swanton keeps growing, that's great, that's gonna help us, you know, and there's.
And that'll be incumbent in the new board to know that as they're developing the FY twenty-one budget.
Right.
So they have to be very fiscally responsible in building that budget. Because that's another.
And again, I'm looking back maybe at the last couple of years, historically, over ten years, I, I'd have to look, I can't tell you what that would be. But knowing that Highgate's also going into a bond project and MVU's currently going through one, I do know that it's typical that there's overages, there's not, you know.
Thank you.
Question. When this budget was built, who determined the budgeted line item for crossing guards?
Probably me.
Or Dina? You should get an award to come within twenty-one dollars of, uh.
That's cause one.
Well, that was Dina.
Cause we don't have them anymore. If we had them, they would've been over. We, we're supposed to have three, and we're down to two right now. Betsy Funear stepped up this year, she will not be able to next year, but she was doing the morning.
We're looking for crossing guards.
Yes, we are. I'm not gonna start looking till later, cause we always get them, and then, so crossing guards and working with the bus company to look for bus monitors as well.
I saw that, and I occasionally drive by and I saw this, I saw this twenty-one dollars. Wow, that was pretty dicey, but.
You usually accept it, or you don't have to accept it, but typically that's what you do.
Can we make a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion, I think.
John made the motion, anybody seconded?
I'll second.
Don seconded. All, any Congress, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, four zero. Oh, paid lunch pricing.
Yes, so, um.
Will we all have the same paid lunch once we're MVSD?
Same price? No, we're, so, we've, we've had separate hot lunch food service management contracts right along. Now that we're merging, and Highgate needs to go out to bid again, the state is sort of recommending, and I happen to agree with that, that we should pool MVU, Swanton and Highgate into one contract and launch it as one. Keeping in mind that we can write the RFP in such a way that everyone can still manage their own programs the way that they want to. They can offer the choices that they offer, they can set their price the way they want within each building. But it would allow us on the administrative side, on the management side, to, to, to make life a little easier.
Was that an oversight, that you didn't add Franklin into that?
Franklin has an in-house program, they do not contract with a food service management company. So, yes, it will probably be their decision, it will be that MVSD that, that awards the bid. But because I know how important these programs are to local schools, I wanted to still have that conversation with you guys and make sure that that was okay, that we're moving forward in that merged manner, instead of separate contracts by building, which could still be done, even though you're turning it to one entity. They allow you to do that with food service.
Did we, I know we discussed this at the MVSD board, did we vote on it?
You allowed me to go out to bid, yes, but I'm just.
Right, I just wanted.
In this limbo, I feel like it's such a, it's a really sensitive issue and a very important issue in a lot of schools, and I just wanna make sure that the boards are comfortable. So that being said, we are working on that contract as a merged contract like, right now, so. But it hasn't been launched yet, so if we need to do something different, we can.
Do we all use the same?
Right now, we do.
All of us.
We never, and we're very, very happy, they run excellent programs, but we never have any comparability or any competition. And that's what the state is thinking, is if we pool our, our populations, then potentially we can get more bids, which would allow us to be more competitive.
To be a larger contract.
Right. That being said, our hot lunch prices and our programs do very well, and our hot lunch, paid meal prices are significantly lower than the rest of the state, so. I don't think we're doing bad right now, but it would be nice.
So we won't have the same cost for?
You don't have to. Our, all of our elementary schools have had the same cost, we, we cleaned that up a couple of years ago, the high school has had a slightly different.
But otherwise, how you would imagine, how you would see it?
Yeah, yeah, but it would allow, if, if the free and reduced price percentage changed in Swanton and it impacted the cash flow of their program or some other thing, it would allow them to still have kind of control over setting their own price if they needed to increase, and not the other schools wouldn't have to necessarily.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of equity. It makes more sense to charge the parents the same amount for food as we charge taxes.
But different schools offer different things.
But that might change.
It, it may change, but right now, we charge more in a high school because the high school made a conscious decision that they wanted lots of different options for kids.
Makes sense, I mean, the high school is gonna be more expensive and everything.
So Laura, if a year into this, we find that cost-wise it's not working, then individual schools can adjust their cost, their price.
Yes.
Oh, we'd look at lots of things, but yes, I'm allowing, we wanna make sure that we're maintaining as much flexi, that's one of the things I'm really focused on, is as much flexibility in each building as you can possibly have, but allows us to manage it much easier on our side.
Franklin, kids eat free, or did they just have an in-house?
They just have an in-house program.
So in the future, the Miss Ciscoy board will set the hot lunch.
Yes.
Price. Right now, the elementaries are the same?
Yes.
In the future, if for some reason, they could easily say the hot lunch in Highgate will be X, the paid lunch in Swanton will be Y, we'll be able to do that.
If they chose to.
If they cho, if there was a reason to do that, okay. I just wasn't sure about that.
I agree with you, there's an equity issue there, but I just wanna make it so it's the board's decision, yeah. So right now, I'm asking this board to approve a increase of ten cents, which would bring you to ten, uh, ten sixty-five, two sixty-five for a paid meal price. Even though I probably will need to revisit this with the MVSD board, I do know that there's communications that principals like to make over the summer to tell families what the price is, at least, even if it's an estimate, I'm hoping. to, to, um, tell families what the price is, at least, even if it's an estimate, I'm hoping it won't be any more than that. Um, but it's the best we can do right now. Um, there's a paid lunch equity tool we have to use every year to come up with this number, and that has been completed.
Okay, so that's what you all are recommending?
So we have to keep working towards this goal. Right now, it's at two dollars and ninety-two cents, and I'm asking you to go to two sixty-five. So that tells you how much lower we are than some of the other places in the state.
Yeah, okay. I, yeah. So do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion. Anyone wanna make one?
I'll make a motion that we set the price at two dollars and sixty-five cents for the paid meal price.
I'll second.
For next school year.
Next school year.
Megan seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And then I had forgotten that I have a hot lunch, um, invoice that the, um, your facility director, Jason Butler, and Dina, I believe, are asking be paid from the hot lunch account. And anytime we have something paid from the hot lunch funds, I usually bring it to the board. Um, it's fifteen hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents, and it's for, um, the bushing motor and stuff on the mixer, O-rings, washers, deflectors, repairs on a mixer, those big commercial mixers are not cheap. Um, and so I'm asking the board to consider paying that from your hot lunch carryover.
Yeah. How's our, uh, freezers and everything? Aren't they a problem too, or is that okay?
I think we've got that all fixed around the year. We've tried to be responsive when those things are happening, the mixer was the latest one.
And those freezers are something, and the walk-in refrigerators are something that all of our schools are going to have to think about long-term because it's an important part of your hot lunch programs, and they're all very old, so.
Does the state still have equipment money?
Small amounts, twenty-five hundred dollar matching grants, yeah. In our school, you can only get them every other year, and there's also milk cooler grants. We do them and get them as much as we possibly can, yeah.
We did a milk cooler grant this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got four of those grants, and if we have one lunch.
Um, I actually don't know how that will work, that's a good question, if we can still have that building, or.
Probably not.
I'm sure they'll make them.
Roger has to make some money in them.
Yeah. Okay, so, um.
If anybody wants to see this, I do have it here.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Megan makes a motion to approve that. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
John seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item is future meeting dates.
So we do not have another meeting date for Swanton in the calendar. Um, we have the Mississauga Valley next, uh, Mississauga Valley Board Meeting is June 4th at six o'clock in the library. Informational meeting, uh, is at seven, that's why the regular time of the board meeting is moved up to six. So it'll be a shorter board meeting, followed by the informational meeting on the budget. That'll be at seven, also in the MVU library.
I know we did have some scheduled for us to get together at the Swanton Board, because we're gonna do strategic planning, but I don't think we need to do strategic planning anymore as a board, do we?
If you did, I didn't have them, it's, it's not in.
I didn't have anything, hell. Oh, really, I had them in, two days, cause we weren't sure.
I thought we had something for June, I thought.
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
June, I, I could look it up.
Okay, let's see.
I'm good, you can channel with me.
Yeah, there you go. Don't know how it happened, then.
I guess not, I thought I did.
No, I do, it's January six, I mean, June.
I didn't, I didn't have the one, I think, maybe at one time we said June, and then we backed it back to, right?
Yeah, I had June 6th, and I had.
I had June 6th.
June 6th, and then I had a June 12th, just in case one of them didn't work.
August 14th.
What's that?
I have an August 14th in my calendar.
Oh, wow. Maybe going forward. So, um, so this is good, so do we need to do anything more, or are we good? If we need to, we can always pull it together, or we could do it at the barbecue at my house that we'll have sometime later this summer.
That would be nice.
That would be nice, well, okay. Okay, so we have a couple more items that we need to discuss, and.
The student request?
We have a student request, and.
There is two of them.
There, we have two student requests, and I think it would be premature public could clearly place the board or other party at substantial disadvantage, plus it's a student matter. So I think we should, I'd, I'd entertain a finding to go into executive session.
I'll do that.
Okay, Don makes that. Do we need a second? Do we, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John seconded. And any discussion? All in favor?
Who are we inviting in?
About going into executive session to discuss the student.
Justina.
Right, who are we inviting in? Oh, I'm sorry. Only have one here. One on that side, isn't it? Okay, so we're inviting Justina and Dina into our meeting?
Do we need Laura?
Laura, do you need to be there? Would you like to take off?